For the invocation, Councilman Clough appears to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve on the City Council and be citizens in Washington City and to be contemplative and careful about the decisions that we might affect people in a positive and helpful way. We're grateful for the inspiration that we're receiving in these positions in Massacre, blessing of cooperation, caring, thoughtfulness, and respect, to be mutual with all of us that are working to better the city and understand the issues as best we can. We do ask for the blessing on us, assuming Father and Asses in Jesus Christ.
All rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is our nation, our God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
Thank you very much. I will now entertain an approval of the motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second.
Wardye, Cloughye, Ranger, Bellas, and
Item two announcements. I'd like to make one announcement. We would like to congratulate Lieutenant Williams. We asked him to be Chief Williams, starting April 1st, and we will honor our outgoing chief tomorrow with a little celebration from him to two at the community center, the reception center, and then we will make case an official Monday at 11 o'clock here in the chambers. Congratulations. Any other announcements from the council? Okay, move on to item three, declaration of extensions and conflicts. I need to declare this time. Okay, item four, our consent agenda, excuse me, to approve the minutes for City Council meeting of 1:25, 2:12, 3:12, and 3:13, to consider two special events. A special event for the Calvary Chapel picnic we held Sullivan Virgin River Park, and consideration to approve a special event for Washington Fields Night Board and Easter egg hunting at the Piny Park. Any questions on any of the consent items?
I just noticed there was pop lock for the Calvary Chapel. Are they giving guidelines or what are they?
Fair that. Anyway, to sneak an understanding of that.
Is that you folks? Okay.
I love seeing that diversity in our parks.
Do we need to know the dates? And one of them says 5/26 and 4/12. Any other questions?
Are these events that they pay for? Yeah, it's kind of a question that I've had before. Do we have a calendar where we indicate which events we do for free and how many we do over year or so. If it's useful, I don't have a pre-prejudice. It's just useful to see. We kind of have an idea of what's going on.
Well, just a question on the, what is the hand drawn restrooms on the, I think it's the second one, so this will be the Washington Fields Night Board? Is that just showing where things are going to be going on?
With that, with that application, they have to do a site plan. So they have to turn that in.
What is it that changes that and makes it a site plan? Is it that they're specifically reserving other areas of the park?
They just show us what things are going to happen when we go over it as a group and make sure that's okay and then eager for it.
And that has to come through the council if they're above how many attendings?
I think by ordinance it's 200.
Because this one, this one is here 100 to 150 as well.
So yeah, that's what it'd be. And we're looking at making a change on that when we do it, you know, higher. But when we get that many people in there, it's going to encourage you to, sometimes they're special events, they have a party.
Just a shit.
I'll entertain a motion.
So, Mayor, I recommend approval of the consent agenda, including the minutes as you indicated and the special events as you indicated.
Second?
Motion and a second.
Ranger, aye.
Cloughye.
Wardye.
Item five, award a bid, consideration to award the bid for the 2019 Slurry Sail project.
Thank you, Mayor. From March 1st, we will put bids on our slurry project. We've got two bidders on the project. Our third bidder, that normally bids on that, didn't matter, but the slurry sale, they actually come up and said that they have scheduling conflict and couldn't put a bid in. So our bids came in, American Paper Preservation was on the bid list of $560,000, $27.55. You see over to the right side of your bid, and we've got Morgan Paper, an African American. So we've corrupted that. We're probably getting that with some of our current projects. American Paper has done a couple of things many, many times. Very common.
I'll second.
It's just a, are we locked into the low bid? We still have to approve it as a council. I'm not specifically on this one. I'm fully intending those orders, but if we had concerns, past history, or staff let us know that they didn't have quite the facility to do it in a timely manner?
One time in my whole history that we actually, I proposed to the council that we reject low bid based on past performance of a contract.
Do we make that a component of the bidding process? Is to demonstrate certain targets and certain available equipment or certain timelines?
Well, we do, we do set timelines on the projects, and sometimes if the project is complex, then we actually pre-qualify the contractors to bid the project.
Can you briefly tell me your process for pre-qualification?
Let me see, what is the project? We are building a water treatment plant. It's a project that we pre-qualify the contractors. They have to have some experience building a microfiltration project.
So you just didn't take any applications there? Didn't take any bids and didn't have any show? Make the terms still as responsive to the State's statute.
Yeah, so bidding contractors, that is all built of its own. The two components, basic components generally are, and the biggest thing in litigation, talk about responsible bidder, responsible, responsible bidder, but my, like, you know, that is the answer to all the questions we'd ask as a witness. We can judge responsible bids, like, Roger, that's in this area in which a bidder is qualified to bid and has nothing to put this behind them. In order to not be a responsible bidder, for example, it's a specialized project, which would have some type of element that you have to have in there, otherwise there's quite a process that you go through. If you're going to start tagging someone and people not accept your bid in the future because you're no longer responsible bidder, and I don't think we've ever in the last 30 years, I've been here, been in a, boy, we thought we've had such a bad job, so many bad jobs, we're going to stop listing people back, because you've got to follow really specific guidelines.
That would be if someone just tags somebody, but if we, if the council decided, A, we have concerns here, what would be our legal grounds for what will be, as far as the law has been? But I realize there's no truly safe legal grounds. They always sue you for that, but.
If it's a private stuff, they get different things. With public, with the way the pyramid code works, the way just that bidding process works.
It could just be, you know, what I just heard. I really, I couldn't have a sense of what can't be in this one.
Really want to have to define why they work that way, and probably be talking about it more. So we have, just a suggestion, if you ever have, if anybody here ever has a concern, and man, like, we saw that one of this parties on, this coming bidder, we're going to work in, you know, in starting a construction company. Man, do I know about the problem they had. If one starts to talk to the high community, it's different. Like, you say, I think we have to, we're going to talk about it. We probably not want to hear about it for the first time, it's an open meeting, but definitely, if we agree, if we ever have an issue, try to talk to them ahead of time, we can kind of block that out.
No, that's good. I just, I was worried that I might not learn anything tonight, so I just wanted to get that out of the way early, so.
So I'd ask kicking and saying, yes, you are bound, except for what wasn't responsible. That's responsible is the key word.
So we've had the issues with the project in the past, and we did have an issue with our slurry project in the past. So what we'll do is we'll change our specifications on the project to cover those issues. So we are covered in those issues if they come up again.
Thank you, Mayor, for the time.
So Doug, did you learn, did you learn something?
I did. I might forget it later.
All right, we have a, we have a motion and a second on the table.
Right, you seconded it.
It was seconded, and I waited for the second. For my discretion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Thank you. Item six, preliminary plat, consideration to approve preliminary plat for the Arroyo at Santa Hills, phases eight and nine subdivision located approximately Grapevine Crossing, Sandy Tallis Drive, Jim Rains, Brandon Holdings, number 100, L L S.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant has stated his request, the approval of the preliminary plat for the Arroyo at Santa Hills, phases eight and nine. This is approximately located, as stated, at Grapevine Crossing, Sandy Tallis Drive. They are proposing 63 lots and the area coverage is 25.33 acres. The zoning at this particular area is the Santa Hills P C D. The surrounding zoning to these particular subdivisions is that same Santa Hills P C D in every direction, north, south, east, and west. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved P C D zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements. Other ordinances at this location, staff reviewed the request, recommended approval with conditions. Planning Commission reviewed the request at their March 6th meeting. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary plat for the Arroyo at Santa Hills, phases eight and nine, on due to City Council. That's with the standard 11 conditions that we usually put on. We did talk about, we have added some notes to let people know that on the one edge of the subdivision, it's up against the beam of flip lane, and so that's been added on. It will also be added to the final plat when that comes, when that comes forward.
Seen that line since all the moisture removed that lately?
I haven't been out to that particular area since then. They're moving a lot of dirt, but yeah. Has it got that, that? You are correct. Yeah, this does not, but right next to it is where those, those ones that you've already given for him by the platform. This is just right at the end, Sandy Tallis up there where it ties into Grapevine.
Any other questions for, for the applicant? You can a motion?
If there's no further consultation, no further discussion, the move that we approve the preliminary plat for the Arroyo at Santa Hills, phases eight and nine subdivision located approximately Grapevine Crossing and Sandy Tallis Drive.
I have a motion and a second.
Wardye.
Cloughye.
Ranger, aye.
It's approved. Item B, consideration to approve a preliminary plat for Southern Vistas, located approximately 4200 South, Washington Hills Road, after Newman Investments in L L S.
Thank you, Mayor. As being the applicant seeking preliminary plat, Southern Vista, as stated, the applicant is proposing 30 lots. The area coverage is 13.698 acres. The zoning at this particular location is single-family residential, 10,000 square foot minimum, and also two lots on the west side of Washington Fields Road are zoned R115, over 15,000 square foot lots. The surrounding zoning is 820 to the west, open space to the east, residential one, uh, single-family residential, 8,000 square foot, and open space to the north, and then P C D, which is the Stewki Farms on the south border. This particular preliminary plat was approved back on June of 2017, but the plat expired due to lack of an application for final plat within the allotted 12 months. The applicant has been slowly moving forward on the project and is now ready to move toward final plat, but to do so, they had to come back in and resurrect the preliminary plat, and that's why we're here tonight. And it is the original design and everything else. It's just that things happened in June of 2017. So it's almost two years ago when it got its City Council approval.
Why would we not have required access to line up those two lots on the east and west?
I don't know if I understand.
You got homes back up, or lots back up, like, there's no access off Washington Fields Road to these lots, or to the center. There's one way to require access.
It was distance because of the size of the road, is what it basically came down.
So you're forced to require them unless we need to buy them two lots.
That because it, that's acting more as a, it's not a, it's a driveway and not a road. This is just one of those, we realized we're going to have to give that driveway access because there was no other to the south or the north, and then it's right up against that ridge on the west. And it, it, that took a little while to get through and through the Lester criteria, is the best way to put it, but we finally worked that out and got that, that hammerhead in there.
It's quite a ways from any other drive access.
I know, but because Washington Fields Road is the size that it is, where they wanted to put it, it didn't meet, it's like 650 feet on, on, on that size of the road, and because of the subdivision to north and south, it didn't, didn't make it. And luckily, the same engineering company was doing all, all these subdivisions in this area and worked it out with all the owners to make this come out. So I, I, I thought they should have just made it a phase of iron horse, but the people who own this didn't want to be called iron horse, and that's fine.
So the people who own this, they're not, they're not different from one side of the road, Washington Fields Road to the other. This is all one quarter.
Yeah, the property, the way they purchased it, this used to be owned by a particular family. There was four lots. I think there were 80 acres. They, they had four kids divided up into four 20 acre pieces, or was it, no, it was four 15 acre pieces, is what it was. It was 60 acres way back in the day, before Washington Fields Road that we know it today ran through here. It actually was running somewhere close to this. But, so all these four kids ended up selling it to different folks and never developed themselves. So everybody who's picked them up has just come through and done all the zone changes and in the subdivision.
So I'm not sure if that's directly Councilman Bellston's point, but I started to get increasingly concerned about, you know, driveways right off major thoroughfares. The future point if we address that with ordinances, but I guess you would get it to a point where some of those would be difficult to develop.
Yeah, we, we looked at every other option and then some, tried to find a way or work with the property owners on, on the three other, on the north, on the west, on the south, and it, this was ultimately the only option. We weren't thrilled about that option, but it is the only option.
That's, that almost seems incredible there with any other option there. Or is any other option currently that we have to?
At that time, that, that was it.
So this option was approved?
Yes, this, the subdivision as you see it, right now, is exactly as it was two years ago.
And haven't been any other changes that would allow us to have the options?
No, all we've, all we did was make sure, I will point out in the planning commission meeting, these particular lots, four and five, they actually are going to have a little bit, I just got the paperwork in today, but they'll change a little. We made, it's a common space. That, this little square down here is, what kind of stations that might, is it a sewer, a water, a power, water? So there's water pumps right there in that little, right below the 186.01, the city has a water facility there. Is it a booster station or something? What's that? It's not part of the subdivision, but the easements that come into it are on both sides of Stewki and of these particular people's property. So they've actually come in, we were going to put an easement here, but all they've done was taken the property lines and bumped them up seven, you know, it went from seven feet to zero feet down there. So we've got that taken care of. It's going to be tied in with the common space, which is out on the street.
Is that basically just a setback?
They're actually, that's what we told them to do. We just call it an easement. They're just going to take the property lines. That way people can build the walls on the property lines, and it will just be a straight easement if the city needs to go in and work on that.
So who will maintain and make the walls on the property lines?
They're moving the property, that's what I tried to explain to you. The property lines in four and five are going up to the north, you know, that's southern boundary. They're, they've just decided, the owner just said, you know what, I just assumed not have to tell my people, oh, by the way, there's this 10-foot thing back here, you can't put in, you know, so they just told the engineer last week, they said, please just tell the city we're going to put them up here. And I've seen the design, so has Brandon. We're fine without the locks. You can see these are big locks anyway. So that, that will be on there, and that's, we've agreed to accept that. It's probably the best thing also.
So their property line's not going to jog right where that building is? That's going to be a 10-foot easement?
Yeah, it'll be at an, it'll come in at an angle from Washington Fields Road down to this particular, you know, point over here, is what it's going to be. So, see this point by the 53.04? It's going to start there and then feather up and...
So who, who will maintain that ground then?
They have a common area, and it'll just be part of the HOA. It's going to be landscape, you know, it's going to be, like I said, it'll be landscape, it'll be open space, and then that gives us not to have to go in people's backyard if we ever need to get in there and work. Again, it's, it's a great solution, actually.
So all of their yards are basically common area? That's the way they're looking at them? Are all of the yards common area after the home?
No, that's, that's why they're moving those property lines up. So that in lot four and five, that southern border is going to be up and it'll then be labeled as common space, open space.
Just that one little piece.
That strip part of theirs. But you can see these lines on this particular subdivision below, it's going to be a gap where the city can go in there and work easily on the, on the lines that go in there.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and make motion to approve preliminary plat for the Southern Vistas located approximately 4200 South, Washington Fields Road. In addition to the approval that the place itself has a publication plan to be announced on the south property line.
Second?
Motion and a second.
Wardye.
Cloughye.
Ranger, aye.
Bellas.
It's approved, thank you. Item seven, plat amendments. Consideration to approve a plat amendment for Ladera, Santa Hills Phase One, amended subdivision, located approximately Sandy Tallis Drive and Ladera Drive, Affiquet Jim Rains, Brandon Holdings, and L L S.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, the applicant's requesting the amended final plat, Ladera. Simply, the request is, is to basically move lot nine a little more off of Sandy Tallis, which is, you can see its border is right here. That's that, that right-hand side of lot number nine. They're pushing it five feet away from the street, and in doing that, they had to then bump lot number 10 a little bit over to keep distances of setbacks. And so this is basically, the person who purchased lot nine just asked that they could get some more feet, because the wealthy said to look into it, get it worked out, so they're bringing that plat in. But with, with this change, you can see lots number 10 and 11 have a little note on them. Those can only be single-story homes only because of the distance between 10 and 11. If you have a two-story home, you've got to have a greater setback in, in our, in our standards. So those, they, they, they can be two-story homes on lot number 12 and nine, because you can see that distance between, but the distance between 10 and 11 would only allow for a single story. Yep.
Is there any concern with pushing it back? We've got a, you've got a trail.
They didn't go back that direction. They went from, they were that, yeah.
Is there a wall back there in between the homes and the trail?
Mr. Rains here, I'll let him, he, his development, or actually has a few buildings in there, but I'll let him answer that.
You know, really, that's a good point. Do you want that trail that close to the back to those homes?
The trail's essentially lower. There's about a 8, 6, 7-foot canyon wall on the back there. The wall's down. We purposely put the wall down when people were looking at the backyard.
Right.
The house isn't going to take all that area. There's the kids in the backyard that's included in that area. So from that, first is 58.5, the house is 10 feet from that, they have 10 foot backyard.
There's a, there's a potential, there's a change, that's?
Yeah, we put, first, we put the trail down low.
I can't see that one. I've seen here, looks like it's set right on top of the trail.
We don't want, didn't want people walking and looking over fences in the yard, so we purposely lowered that trail.
Maybe that'd be the dog walking. There's a dog in the backyard, walk around. Maybe one drink.
Yeah, we just felt like it was better to keep the house a little bit away from Sandy Tallis and still maintain integrity of the lot. Because it's a solid part of the structure. It's just, it's an electrical box, ball, and there's a big inlet drain in that common area. It's just, it's just getting too high. So whatever, five, I agree, two homes, a single story. We have to have 10 feet between a single story and 15 feet. Took that five feet, made up this itself as a single story.
So it's this particular, like, zoom in, and it just goes to white, black lines on white background. So it's just turned differently than, we were looking at it this way, and now it's turned this way. So you can see what Jim was talking about with all that equipment on that side. They wanted to bump it over. And I was hoping to say, because I wasn't sure, but the pad, they weren't going to fill the whole pad with the house, so I'm glad that, because that was going to be my thought, that it was going to be bumped back.
Thank you.
You can a motion?
You're ready?
Mayor, remove approval of the plat amendment for here at Santa Hills.
Motion and a second.
Wardye.
Cloughye.
Ranger, aye.
Bellas. Curry, aye.
Thank you. Item eight, minor subdivision, consideration to approve a minor subdivision for Rosewood Minor Subdivision, located approximately 150 west, 100 north, Affiquet Brian Anderson, High Barn, and the vicinity.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated again, the applicant's requesting Rosewood Minor. The applicant is wishing to subdivide the present 0.70 acre parcel into four lots. Lot one of the subdivision will be 0. Lot one of the subdivision will be zero point one four five acres, lot two will be zero point two zero three acres, lot three will be like, lot two with zero point two zero three acres. And then lot four will be zero point one four four acres. The proposed minor subdivision is currently zoned, single-family residential, six thousand square foot minimum, referred to as the R one six zoning designation. Surrounding zoning is R one six to the north, west, and east, and then C two with A P, uh, directly across the street, which is currently our I T, whatever you call it now, building, the old P D, and then the old nice and store. Staffs reviewed the requested proposal, and the proposed Rosewood Minor Subdivision conforms to the standards set forth in zoning and subdivision ordinances. Planning Commission reviewed the request at their March sixth meeting, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the Rosewood Minor onto the City Council, and that's based on the findings and subject to the conditions, which are the standard for a final plat. Now, we did enhance number five a little bit there, that the access area between one and four, and then kind of zoom in there. Um, that shaded area needed to be extended, um, twenty feet to the north, and also be called a public utility and drainage easement and ingress egress easement. So that's, I think that's already been taken care of, I think they brought in a new exhibit, it just, it put that shaded area up there twenty feet higher, so wouldn't have anybody coming in and crossing that line, that's somebody, if they got mad at their neighbor and causing a half field McCoy right here, when these two people get up there, they have to basically dart off and come in at these forty-five degree angles, and so I just had them bump that up there, so there would be no, no issues with that. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. If you remember, this project has been, this particular lot has been denied probably four P U Ds, um, in the last eight years, Councilman Turk's probably seen most of them. Um, they kept trying to put P U Ds with townhomes, condo-type things in here. No, not this particular lot, it was a six, it was an eightplex. Uh, that they tried to put in, and it wasn't a bad design, but it was just a lot crammed on there, and, um, and that was denied, and then there was, through the years, it's been six, seven, or eight units they've tried to get on here. Finally, we have somebody, I've just told them, please do like what Lane Matthews did up on four hundred north, or five hundred north up there, and just make it a, and it's pretty much gonna mirror that project, which turned out really well, those four lots up there, turned out well, so. But other than that, I'll be glad to answer any questions the council might have on Rosewood Minor.
If you just kinda, I know you broke it down for us, but I'm trying to understand the accessibility a little bit clearer, could you explain how those back lots, the parking and everything works with that?
Okay, what, what happens is, is these, these, the shaded area that's kind of the darker gray?
Right.
They're thirteen feet wide each.
It's twenty-six feet.
So whenever we have people do a flag lot, we make them do a twenty-foot, what we call the pole side of the flag. So in this case, we had them all, we both had thirteen, so it's a twenty-six foot wide area to go back and forth in there, so that's like two lanes, basically, of traffic. You know, a lane of traffic is eleven or twelve feet, so they have that coming either direction. So that, that gets them back to those two lots, it's almost like a mirrored flag lot scenario. If that helps you see that?
Yes.
And so, but I just told them, the gray area needs to be bumped up toward the easement, it's legal ingress egress up there, so they can get up, but even after they get past those property points, can still have room to come in and not be, and again, cause what could happen is some neighbor get real mad, and he could run a fence all the way down to that, top of that gray right there, and legally, he could do that, wouldn't help him out, but just in spite, so that's why I made it, if you put that easement up there, you can't do that.
So if this.
Is it adequate for a fire truck to get in and out of there?
Well, they can pull in, set their outriggers down, and fight if they need to, now, they're, most of them, I've talked to the chiefs that we've had over the years I've been here, and most of them are gonna tie onto a hydrant and send guys down, or they'll send their scat truck in there and use those pumps if they need to. But they could technically pull a, that's why we have a twenty-foot minimum on our flag lots, that's wide enough for the send our, our biggest truck, and they can put out what they call the outriggers, those feet, you know, footprints, they'll set down because all that motion and stuff going on, and it's twenty feet's adequate, so I think twenty-six will do it as well, so. Yeah, so it, it, it'll meet with the fire department.
So within this widened area, is it something that is a shared cox to maintain and upkeep by all four people?
No, you own, that's, lot number two and three own their half of that, it's part of their property.
And so they're allowing the other people?
It's their extended driveway, and they share, they share access just with each other, that's why it's a ingress egress easement and utility easement, so they can, if they need to separate out and run the sewer and the water, and you gotta have, you know, if you run those, you can't put them right next, so it gives them plenty of room for both lots, make sure they can run their sewer and their water and everything.
So that it's them, the fact they have a place to run their utilities, and the other people can benefit from that space pulling it out of there?
It actually works really, really well. For, especially in this kind of scenario, it's the best, you know, out of there without having one big lot, which is also a consideration too, but.
Sounds like a unique relationship.
Thank you.
It actually, yeah, there's one up on four hundred north, it's very similar to what you mentioned, I think that's kind of what the council, the past council is kind of asking for in these situations, those types of if you fit into the neighborhood, you don't have an apartment, like a complex, and then it towers over, that's kind of been the.
Can you, can you still meet your minimum lot size of six thousand, nor, or bigger, so you can see these lots are coming in at sixty-two, sixty-three, um.
No, no room to build those future mother lot parks.
Not in this one.
This is the other one.
Remember, we talked about the mother lot, those are gonna have, that's why we said, the minimum lot's gonna have to be an R one ten on those. She'll have to live inside these.
It might be over there.
Somehow, I picture that little road kind of cluttered with little bikes and cars.
Cars.
Pretty young families in there, that's what I picture.
I thought the same too, but if you drive up to Mr. Matthews' development there, it's, it's pretty clear, and actually.
That's true.
He did, but he could sell them off, they're on four separate lots, yeah, but. Well, again, the beauty of this is, you have that dividing line, if it seems like the one neighbor always has, uh, toys out there, you can just throw it to his side of thing up against.
Plenty of room to maneuver around that.
Exactly.
So the main, the benefit is you see, is we have the common space for utilities, they have the ability to access it, we have our minerals, we get the fire trucks. A unique opportunity to develop, you know, probably, we can get some out there.
And again, it's right off of, again, it's north of commercial zone property.
That's true.
So, um.
It means that.
Yeah, you like to have more of a higher density next to those, this kind of helps, you know.
I'd appreciate it being for, you know, homes, is there, is there a bit of investment?
Little bit more investment, I believe, so the owner.
All right, thank you, any additional questions or comments? Any comments or questions for the applicant? If not, I'll entertain, entertain a.
Is the applicant present? I don't have any questions, it makes me wish I had.
Make it worth your while to be here.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you're looking for a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve a minor subdivision for the Rosewood Minor Subdivision, located at approximately one fifty west and one hundred north.
Washington in second.
Curry guy.
Ellison.
Curry.
Cluff eye.
Ward nine.
Thank you, that is approved. Item nine, memory, memorandum of understanding, discussion and consideration to approve an M O U between Brio and Washington City on the debris basin.
Thank you, Mayor, um, this is a, uh, agreement between the city and the Brio Development in construction of a recent basin at the top of Main Street. It's the big one, but it's not the full size, the full size is, we're still working on trying to get the, uh, money from the N R C S to construct that, which is looking very, very good. But that, that's actually quicker timeframe than we have this been. In the agreement, they are, they are giving, uh, some impact fee credits for the project, because it would go against their recording of the flats, uh, impact fee credit of twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, which is about twenty-five percent of the project that's shown in our master plan, uh, which is that drainage basin that's in there, so some other improvements need to be done in the future. Kindness of the essence on this, so we get through the deadline, that it had to be constructed by June first. Now, if they're not doing the construction, they are doing the construction, they will hire a contractor to do the construction. The city will be supplying the materials, so piping and the inlet structures, we'll be supplying that, but they will be actually hiring the contractor to do the construction. Our design.
But still, uh, quite yet, it's, it's.
No, we still will come back later and enlarge it, make it that full-size basin, uh, what we'll call it, to determine.
So how much of it will we redo virtually everything, other than the?
No, we're actually, hey, we're gonna be digging the larger, a larger basin, so expand, expand.
So the gray level at the bottom will stay the same, you'll increase it?
And our structures, everything that we're putting in, it's still.
With the time of the essence, the hope is when the funding comes in, we can expand it upon the reception of that funding. Let's still be prepared for our wonderful scattered, you know, torrential dump.
This, this basin will be large enough to easily handle the events that we had last year.
So where you, where was the timing written in on this?
Timing is under number five.
So that's, my, okay, so my copy leaves that open, so it says April.
That's what the city needs to supply the materials by April, late, and they will complete construction no later than June first, twenty-nine.
Oh, I see, I see. So as this expands, um, obviously, maintenance of this basin is Washington City, right? And it will not be upon the developer to maintain anything or?
Right, this, the, the basin isn't even on the Brio site, no, it was in their drainage zone, but it's, it's part of their drainage plan for the basin, so that's part of the reason why they're putting funds forward to him, the forty-nine thousand dollars does not cover the cost of construction, probably about one-third of the cost of the construction. We actually got a, a estimate of, uh, hiring the contractor to do that, we're about hundred and twenty thousand, the contractor coming to this basin.
I would say strike that word easily.
This'll easily never happen when Mike is out of town.
As I say, we'll be fine as luck.
Won't be good, where, where's your clause that Mike will always be here?
It will tie into the existing basin, and also.
The outlet will tie.
The outlet of the basin. No. Brio will not. This is all the drainage that would be, on these, these side of the construction.
And that's where it's flowing naturally now, it's not.
Well, it's coming now, that, that's.
Yeah, Brio's got their basin, that will cover theirs.
We're figuring, without the added from this, Brio doesn't think.
Correct, and that's what their drainage study shows, without their basin, theirs will, the plats in their.
So these credits, the impact, the credits, as you know, generally speaking, people with that agreement, if they complete, if they ever expand it more than, than they would be required, with their building in a project, kind of like state law, their oversight is more the benefit of the city, of the city, they would be entitled to it anyway, so I, so what Mike said, it's really nice to lay it down in this agreement, though, since this is what your credit is, then there's no concern about that.
Yeah, Brio actually has a agreement in place for the rest of the development, because a lot of their infrastructure is in our master plan, so they happy to get the credits for those. And our, our, our impact fees on stormwater come at the time of platting, not at a building from there, so they've been receiving those credits as they plot sections of their development, so. We already have one, so. And it, it, it's an easement on the property, we don't own the property, but they gave us easement across the property, or this basin and the basin on Boyne Vista, the basin on Boyne Vista will construct that with certain credits.
And part of our thing, why the thing you're saying?
They did use the easement on Boyne Vista as well as.
I know their life was.
Yes, on Boyne Vista.
And when coal on the corner, with coal dust.
No, they're two separate basins, two separate basins.
Yeah, correct.
So what, what do we get out of this, as far, do we get the installing riprap down at the bottom, so, cause part of the problem we had before was it washed down, it was heavy enough load, but it washed down the rock, so we get, we get a basin that actually slows the water down, so it loses energy in the basin, and then, and then what kind of protection, concrete, up against the actual?
The basin itself, I don't think we're doing any riprapping in there right now, that will come as we do with the N R C S.
But you're still expecting to receive a, a benefit from the, from just being able to deposit material and slow down?
Exactly.
Before it, before it hits the out.
Yes, so, so our, our, our existing drainage lines, storm drainage lines, will now have the capacity to take all the water, because this will slow, it'll retain it and slow release it, so we have the capacity in our lives to take.
At a, at a maximum flow, how long do we think it will retain and tell it rains that down?
We, I, I know we got those numbers, I just don't.
That's fine, Mr. State.
Any other questions for Mike, and I'll entertain a motion.
And this doesn't, this doesn't become any kind of a dam structure, it's just, it's just retention, so you don't have any of the extra?
Correct, yeah, we definitely don't want to retain water, I, I believe our standard is that, that any kind of basin has to be completely dammed within twelve hours.
Yeah.
We don't wanna store any water, because that does put us into, damn, safety issues.
Any safety.
Would you just spell that one?
Which one?
Safety.
I would say safety, I don't know.
Mayor, looking for a motion, I, I make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Brio and Washington City on the debris basin.
Washington in second.
Ward nine.
Cluff eye.
Ranger eye. All right, item ten, report of officers from A O dash sign. Okay, if not, I'll go to the city manager report.
I just have a couple items, Mayor, um, we think we'll be prepared if the council, uh, would like to, uh, it's coupled with this, to schedule an open council for the cross-section of Main Street. April fourth, um, here in this chamber. Yeah, let's do that, but.
Ward nine. Oh my goodness, thank you guys.
So before you get up though, Mike, let's just firm that up, is any concern if we, uh, uh, proceed for next Thursday, week from tomorrow?
No, that's great, what, when, what does the timeframe that would be?
Uh, we'll probably try, what, five to seven?
Let me double check here.
And again, we'll kind of do this in open house format, so that, uh, we'll be staffed there, you'll be there, um, and the public can, will have the different, uh, kind of try to format it a little bit, so people can give their input. Try to, format it like we've done for. Five to seven. Right here, the council chips up approximately then to.
Did you say five?
Yeah.
Is that gonna be sufficient to get the word out to those functions?
We're giving, we're giving, we're giving a door to door, we just, we put a door hanger on that, of course, give it on the hall, because it's something that is.
Man, you're cheap. You're cheap.
I, I think, last I heard, Maury was still on a diet, and then we bribed him with food.
So we actually met the sunrise engineering again today, and they really jumped right on this. And so this afternoon, about four o'clock, they set this cross-section. So with this, we, we looked at doing a little bowl mouth, but we also got to do the layers in the bulbs on the intersection, which is one of the best ways of trapping. We also decided to put in a crosswalks to a raised, or stamped concrete, but raised to it. Give it a really heavy patterns when you go where you feel it, have it raised a little bit, so you feel it, which is also a trap to come. Little bowl mouths, that's a trap to come feature. Um, I'm, I'm really excited with this design.
You're talking to me, the public works director, really excited.
My head.
Well, it's, I mean, this is really something that is not non-existent in.
Well, you know, as, as I was rolling over these options that were presented and seeing this. It feels significantly better now with the concepts and how they're interpreted.
So we, we fit the bike lanes in, we fit parking in, and we still have the, a little bit of a landscape off the edge of the sidewalks.
Now, that edge off the sidewalks, I mean, that can be interpreted as we will go ahead and will landscape that heavy, or that could just be.
Yeah, it'll just be, it'll basically be an area that the homeowner can, will go in, will swap, but we won't necessarily landscape that backside.
Probably, Mike, if the. Um, the uh, if we uh, if we want to make the, that just in addition to the yard, we would actually need that back, right? We would want to retain.
So at that point, would you lose that last part of right? Would you say, hey, we forever?
But you know, if we, if we actually landscape it, we just create a section and rise, unified look to that main street. I think that may be worth some more discussion, because if we can integrate the landscaping uh, with what's happening in the middle and the road and the popouts, you know, the way we've. Got a cohesive look to that area, and it becomes, in fact, the main street.
I look forward to hearing. That's absolutely awesome. People, everybody, people talk about how that'd be beneficial.
So what, kind of what we're planning for the public public houses, we're gonna take each block section, and we're gonna lay out on the table and carry it. Section and try to get people at least to talk, we want to take input out there from individual houses. So we can talk individually with them about their house and what can be done with them. Last night when we left, we talked to the county unions and, and a great conversation with them, and, and one of the residents, I don't know what her name, but. I mean, really good conversation at the meeting from now on, so. I, I, I just, I think you're all, that's a great, you know, some grading, but people can see what we're trying to do there. But we'll also have the, all the different cross-sections on some boards that they can look at.
That's impressive.
We have a uh, organization here in town that is very interested in bike lanes. Can we get a notice to them? I would just love to have some. Glance at what we've done and just give any feedback from them.
Yeah, the, the bike lanes, we're pretty much, we're dictated by law, what to do on bike lanes.
Well, I just, with, with the parking on the one side and the.
That's where we have to put the bike lanes. We can't put the bike lane next to the curb and have parking. It actually has to be where it's shown when you have parking. So. Uh, we, there's, there's a lot of design that's required for bike lanes. Wits.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. We will now entertain the motion to go to a closed session. Oh, excuse me, excuse me, to discuss purchase exchange release.
Second.
Ward eye.
Bell's nine.
Ward eye.
For it says I.
Murray guy.
I say, kind of do this, I kind of threw it up there as it's a fair game.